Councilman, thank you for acknowledging the passing of Queen Elizabeth, a staunch ally to ours for 70 years, and she ruled with class and dignity and compassion as well. So, thank you for that. All right, the council's had time to review the minutes from the August 25, 2022 regular meeting. Are there any additions? Seeing none and hearing none, the minutes are approved by acclamation. We'll move on to the public hearing portion of the night. Item A, consideration of an ordinance to rezone 1.92 acres from single-family residential to a highway commercial zoning district as requested by Justin Moore on behalf of West Hill Church of Christ. Matt Martin will present.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. This property is located on West Hill Avenue. It's actually the backyard of a broader subject property. It is the West Hill Church of Christ. It is split zone between Highway Commercial and R6. As you see on the screen, the rest of the property is that red area that has CH zoning that does not have the label on it. The aerial image shows the features around there a little more clearly. You see the existing church building with the parking lot. The church is proposing to expand, to build an even larger building in the area off to the west. Because of the split zoning and part of it being an R6, they had to make a choice of either seeking a conditional use permit and R6 zoning for a church, or rezoning the R6 portion to commercial, which allows a church as a use by right. Same process, same timeline, same fees. So, they opted with staff's advice to follow the rezoning. The zoning pattern in the area you see is dominated by highway commercial zoning. It is separated from the RM properties to the back by a power easement and some very dense vegetation, but everything is highway commercial along this corridor. So, the highway commercial rezoning request seems to make sense. Character area is community activity center for this whole corridor, which, as you know, allows for intensive type zoning such as CH. Aerial imagery, of course, showing the pattern, its proximity to St. Augustine Road. In your packet also is a survey that shows the split zoning with their overall boundaries, and then also the conceptual site plan to show that even with the proposed expansion, they still will have some room for future expansion. Subject property, as you see it from West Hill with their signage, the existing building. This is the subject property for the rezoning part. That's the backyard. This is looking westward from Stewart, and then the power line easement that is immediately behind, and then some of the commercial buildings that are really on the intensive side of the commercial scale. Jones Steel Supply, which is the property to the east, and then Harmon's Awards on the property that's in the front corner, and then the Miles Plaza across the street. Planning Commission reviewed this at their recent meeting on August the 29th, and they found it consistent with the comprehensive plan. These stands for exercise of zoning power, which are there in your packet, and they are recommending approval. Be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Matt? Matt, thank you. This is a public hearing, so if there's anybody at this time that would like to come forward and speak in favor of this request, please do so now. And please state your name.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I am Dr. Moore. I'm the minister of the congregation. In spite of what we experienced during COVID, my congregation has bounced back and experienced a great amount of growth, and we are proposing to build a $2.8 million dollar building next door, and I would love it if you could allow us to be zoned correctly in order to build.
Any questions for the pastor? Congratulations.
Thank you, sir. God bless you.
On your growth.
Thank you.
Anybody else who would like to speak in favor of this request? Seeing none, is there anybody that would like to come forward and speak in opposition to this request? Seeing none and hearing none, I'll turn it over to council for action.
Mayor, I have a motion to approve this request as stated.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any further comments? All in favor, show of hands. Unanimous. Council, thank you. Now, congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
On to item B, consideration of an ordinance to rezone 1.44 acres from single-family residential R10 to highway commercial, CH, as requested by Hamilton Dickey on behalf of Culbert Family Limited Partnership. Matt Martin again to present.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. This property is located at 1705 Ellis Drive, which you see on the map on the screen is on the east side of the road, about halfway between North St. Augustine Road and Baytree. It is right on the border of a changing of a zoning pattern where it's dominated by commercial zoning and commercial uses along Gonto and St. Augustine Road, and then some less intensive uses as you move northward up toward Baytree Road. R10 is the current zoning. They're requesting CH. This is to match the property immediately to the east, which is the former Astro Exterminating Property. Buildings have been recently demolished. The former house on this property has also been recently demolished. It is all under common ownership, and they are marketing it for commercial development. No proposed use as of yet, no proposed site plan, but it's simply for marketing purposes. R10 zoning is not a compliant zoning district within Community Activity Center, is simply not intensive enough, so that in itself warrants a change of some kind. Aerial imagery, you see some of the existing development pattern from at least a couple of years ago. Hotels seem to be the popular land use nearby, including the Hilton Garden Inn, which is seven floors. Subject property is really just a simple rectangle. This is how it looks from Ellis Drive, cleared vacant lot with an entrance gate on the south end. This is looking eastward toward Gonto Road, already for sale and being marketed as commercial property. Adjacent hotel to the south, which is the fairly new one, that was a redevelopment of a prior hotel. The Hilton Garden Inn, this is their backyard that faces Ellis Drive. The building, as you know, is oriented toward Gonto. And then this is the buffer area and retaining wall that's on the west side of Ellis Drive between the subject property and a condominium development, which is several feet lower than the road itself. Existing residents on the R10 property to the north, and then the Black Crow Media Office beyond that. From Gonto Road, this is looking across the former Astro Exterminating Property toward Ellis Drive, and you see it's all, looks like one big cleared lot. So, with this one, Planning Commission also reviewed this at their meeting on August the 29th. They found this request consistent with the comprehensive plan. This stands for exercise of zoning power, which are there in your packet, and they are recommending approval of CH zoning.
Matt, thank you. Council, any questions for Matt? Hearing none, again, this is a public hearing. Anybody that would like to step forward and speak in favor of this request, please do so now. Hello?
Good afternoon. Hey, my name is Hamilton Dickey, Bob Mawest Trail Circle. I've been asked to represent the Culbert family in this rezoning. As you can see, it's all surrounded by CH, and they want to sell the property all as one property. They don't want to, I guess, subdivide it or anything else. And everybody that's approached to us, they said, "Well, what about the R10 zoning?" And so, we want to just market it as all as one property. As you can tell, everybody around there is already commercial. Astro actually used this as commercial property prior to this anyway. They parked their trucks there, and there was a vacant house that they tore down now. And, I mean, it just, they tore it down just because they didn't even use it. So, I just, I think it's a no-brainer, and I ask for approval. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you. Anybody else that would like to speak in favor of this request? Seeing none, is there anybody that would like to speak in opposition? Again, seeing none, I'll close out the public hearing portion and turn it over to council for action.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the rezoning of this 1.44 acres.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any further comments? All in favor, show of hands. Unanimous. Thank you. Congratulations. I'm excited to see what goes there. Move on to item C, consideration of an ordinance to rezone 0.32 acres from single-family residential to a residential professional zoning district as requested by Chaz and Carrie Ann Bowden. Property is located at 202 Wayne Avenue. Matt Martin again to present.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. and Mrs. Bowden are requesting to rezone their property, which is a single-family residence, currently zoned R15. They were requesting RP zoning to match the zoning pattern across the street, and is for purposes of redeveloping this property as a standard professional office for what they hope to be a future law firm for themselves. As you see, it's a, Wayne Avenue is a separation between R15-dominated pattern on the north side, the RP zoning pattern on the south side. But as we talked about at the work session, even with the RP zoning on the south, it is mostly single-family residential, on the order of about 16 or 17 different single-family homes, with only one professional office in that interior, which is a professional office for William Whitezel, the corner of North Tombs and Wayne Avenue. Character area, transitional neighborhood, which, as you know, is transitional either to change the pattern that is there, or to stop changes that are occurring and try and protect a prior pattern that may have occurred. In this case, it's a residential area along the road, but it recognizes some of the mixed zonings nearby. Aerial imagery really shows the existing pattern. These are rooftops. These are all single-family homes that you see in the image. Survey in your packet. They have no professional office site plan. This is simply existing as a sketch showing floor plan of the existing house. There is a small circular drive in the front, which you actually see a little better with the photograph of the property. A standard single-family residence, small driveway. If this were to convert to a professional office, and if they were to keep this building, they would need to install a parking lot, I think, with at least five parking spaces, standard striped spaces, store marted detention if the pavement exceeds a certain amount, and so forth. If they were to demolish the house, then there would be a whole new site plan review. But simply converting it requires parking. Adjacent property, this is the corridor on Wayne Avenue from the subject property. This is looking east toward Patterson Street. Single-family home immediately to the west, the one to the east on the corner. This is looking westward down Wayne Avenue toward Oak Street, and then the Fairfield Development that's directly across the street. RP zoning, but all single-family homes, and then one of the houses that's freestanding that is nearby. Planning Commission reviewed this one at their August 29th meeting. They found the request inconsistent with the comprehensive plan, and not compliant with the standards for exercise of zoning power. Some of those responses are there in your packet. They are recommending denial of this zoning change. Be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Counsel, any questions for Matt? Matt, thank you. Again, this is a public hearing item. Anybody that would like to come forth now and speak in favor of this request, please do so. Please state your name.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Carrie Ann Bowden, one of the applicants for this rezoning request. My husband and I own the property, and we are both practicing attorneys. We both practice in separate offices and have no plans of starting a new practice right now, but that is something, when we went to law school many years ago, that we had talked about wanting to do one day. And so, we are just kind of in the very early stages of talking about that, and if this, obviously, we disagree with even the zoning commissioner, commission's findings that it's inconsistent, and I'll talk a little bit about that, but we just are trying to plan for, for future. I do have, it's not part of the packet, but I do have a printout of several things that I'm happy to hand up with the council's permission. I'd like to talk a little bit about, first, the character area. This area is a transitional neighborhood, and I'll give y'all time to get all of that so y'all know where I'm, what I'm referring to. On the last page, and even Mr. Martin has that pulled up on the screen, but the character area of this neighborhood is transitional. It's not residential. The particular block that we are attached to, there are several single-family residential homes, but the nature of the general area is a mixture of both residential and businesses. On the first page of the packet that I handed out, I kind of printed out, I went to the Valor Interactive website and I printed out some screenshots. Our property is the property that is kind of highlighted in black there. We are R15 currently requesting rezoning to RP. You'll see across the street is all RP. At the planning meeting, there were three people who, neighbors that, who came and spoke against. All but one of those are already zoned RP. And even one of those may not even be a record, owner of record. His name doesn't match the property records, and then the other one doesn't even live there. She rents out the property on Fairfield. And what's interesting is all of this is zoned RP, and yes, they are at single-family residential homes, but technically, we could go and rent one of those and have a business there because it's already zoned RP, and the only thing that is different is the street. The street is the buffer, so to speak. But I'll point you to, if you look up on the north side of the block where we are, even on our block, there is already property that is zoned RP. It's on the top left-hand corner of the page, but that's already zoned RP. And then all of the asterisks that I've marked on that particular page are already businesses. And so, there are a multitude of businesses already in the area. If you look at, and that is, quite frankly, that is still what we intend to do for the foreseeable future. Again, my husband and I both practice at different firms, and we don't have plans tomorrow, if this is approved, to change to a business. Mr. Martin and even at the planning council, or the planning commission, commission meeting, we talked about a little of the existing structure. We have no plans to demolish, demolish the structure and rebuild. There's plenty of, plenty of space to make a parking lot if that were, or parking spaces if that became necessary. I would also say that some of the folks that brought up concerns said that, "Oh, this would be an eyesore," or the safety of the neighborhood is, is, would be at jeopardy, and we believe that's completely untrue. I believe that keeping owner occupied in the area is actually beneficial. And so, if we don't get this rezoned and move out, we're going to either rent it or sell it to somebody who may rent it. It's very close to the college. And so, you come with all of that. Plus, a few years ago, our home was broken into. Our neighbor's home was broken into on the exact same day. A month or two later, a vehicle across the street was broken into and stolen. And I think our home was broken into about at lunchtime, so in the, in broad daylight. And so, I think having a presence there during the day is only going to help increase the safety of the neighborhood. We believe that this rezoning is completely in line with the transitional neighborhood. We're not the first in the block even to, to do this. It's not setting a negative precedent because there's already RP zoning all around, and we believe that this is perfectly consistent, and would ask that the rezoning be approved despite the council, the commission's recommendation. And I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Counsel, any questions for Ms. Bowden? None, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to come forward and speak in favor of this request? Seeing none, is there anybody that would like to come and speak in opposition to this request? Again, seeing none, I'll turn it over to council for action.
Mayor, I'd like to make an emotion to deny the request as stated.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any further comments? All in favor of denial, show of hands. For, all in opposition, same sign. Four to the motion carries for denial. We'll move on to item D, consideration of an ordinance to rezone a total of 4.94 acres from single-family residential to multifamily residential, and 2.19 acres from single-family residential to multifamily residential as requested by H.M. Valdosta LLC. Matt Martin to present again.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. And if you do the math and add those acreages together, we're really considering 11 parcels totaling 7.13 acres, but from those two existing zoning districts. Zoning map on the screen really tells the story. It's a, currently a mixed pattern of R10 and R6 zoning districts. As described in your packet, the history goes back to about 2004, when there was a previous zoning change request that came forth and was approved for the R6 properties that you see, as well as what is now RM property to the north, which did get developed as a new apartment complex back at that time. All of that predated the LDR, and as we talked about at the work session, R6 zoning at that time was the multifamily zoning district. The proposed use back then was for multifamily. It was rezoned to R6 accordingly, and then in 2009, the LDR changed the rules for R6, made it a small-watt, single-family type zoning district, and then established a new district called RM, which is multifamily residential. At that time, all of the existing large multifamily complexes were rezoned from R6 to RM. These other R6 properties that you see here were not developed as multifamily at that time, so they were not changed. Fast forward multiple years to today, we have a different developer coming in, looking at pretty much the same proposal, except that they have 11 properties in a more compact form, really the whole eastern side of the Baytree Drive neighborhood, and they're proposing really the exact same thing, to rezone to RM for purposes of a multifamily complex. Character area, transitional neighborhood again for this area, and you see the other character areas around it. A particular note is a neighboring property you see to the southeast of this Institutional Activity Center. That is part of the VSU campus. That is on the other side of Two Mile Branch, excuse me, One Mile Branch, and also follows the multipurpose trail. And that is by no accident, the applicants are proposing college-related housing, and they are proposing a direct connection to the VSU campus going across that creek. In the image, you see the tree pattern in the area, existing apartment complex to the north, some other multifamily to the northeast. Survey shows the details of the 11 parcels of land. This is their conceptual site plan, showing 124 apartments and different type building sizes. In your packet is a color diagram that shows the different building heights that range from one, two, and three-story, and some mixture of two-bedroom or three-bedroom units. As good design, the taller, more dense buildings are in the southern part of this property away from the rest of the neighborhood. The northerly and westerly parts are the smaller buildings. Subject property, there's a few sample photos here to show the single-family neighborhood. Most all of these are rental housing. Some of them appear to be vacant, but this is the pattern along Baytree Drive with the existing houses that are part of the subject property. Adjacent, we get to the western end. This is looking southward from Baytree Drive down Wainwright. The dip in the road is where the road goes across One Mile Branch into the next neighborhood to the south. Everything on the left of this is part of the subject property. From that same intersection looking north, the subject property corner is the property immediately to the right, and then the first non-subject property is the grayish-looking building or the house to the north of that. On the other side, you have the backside of what we used to call College Station Apartments, now called the Gates, existing multifamily. This is the other multifamily that's on the other side of Baytree Drive to the east that we talked about at the work session. This, I think, is under condominium ownership. And this is a view looking north toward Baytree Drive toward Baytree Road, and here you see the multifamily that's on both sides of the road. Again, the entrance to the gates, and then the general pattern is shown in the packet. Planning Commission reviewed this request at their August 29th meeting. They found it consistent with the comprehensive plan. The standards for exercise of zoning power is outlined in your packet, and they are recommending approval of RM zoning for all 11 parcels. Be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Matt? Matt, thank you. Again, a public hearing item. Anybody that would like to come forward and speak in favor of this request, please do so and state your name.
My name is Bill Kent. I'm with Innovate Engineering and Surveying, 2214 North Patterson Street, here on behalf of the developers who are here to answer any questions if you should have any specific questions of them. Yes, a lot of thought and effort has been put into planning what you see on the conceptual site plan. They are aware of the development challenges that are inherent with every development. They are actually under construction of another student housing development in the city right now. So, they're very familiar with Valdosta and the requirements there. So, anyway, the staff made, made a great presentation and explained a lot of the thought process too that went into tying this into Valdosta State. So, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Bill? Bill, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak in favor of this request? Seeing none, anybody who would like to come forward and speak in denial of this request? Again, seeing none, I'll turn it over to council for action.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve as stated.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any further comments? None, all in favor, show of hands. Unanimous. Congratulations. Good luck. Close out the public hearing portion, move on to item four, ordinances and resolutions. Item A, consideration of an ordinance to amend the refuse, collection, and disposal ordinance. This will be the second reading. Anthony Musgrove, Public Works Administrator, to present.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is the second reading for the amended refuse, collection, and disposal ordinance. The city suspended curb side recycling due to COVID-19 and opened up three mobile recycling drop locations. Part of the suspension, the city did a complete audit beginning in the early of 2020, found that only 21% of homes were recycling. Also, over the past several years, residents were required to call in for special pickups. Special pickups have changed to bulk item pickup without the requirement to call in. Now, bulk items, they're required to be placed out by noon the day before the scheduled sanitation pickup. All changes have been outlined in the agenda packet and highlighted in red in the attached city ordinance to reflect the current collection process. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any question, any questions for Anthony? Anthony, thank you.
You're welcome.
Counsel? Turn it over to you for action.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the amendments as presented.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any further comments? All in favor, show of hands. Unanimous. Thank you. Item B, consideration of an ordinance to amend Chapter 6, Alcoholic Beverages. Article 2, Licenses, Section 636, Wine-Only Establishments. Wine tastings and retail tobacco stores of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Valdosta to add provisions for malt beverages. Matt Martin to present. I got it out.
Thank you, Mayor. Chapter 6 is the alcoholic beverages chapter of the city's Code of Ordinances. The proposal, when you look at it in the underlying strikeout form that's there in your packet, the actual wording change is fairly simple, but in essence, it adds malt beverage only to the possibility of wine-only establishments. As you know, alcoholic beverages, except for wine-only, require food service. In other words, function more like a restaurant that serves alcohol. Wine-only establishments are exempt from that requirement citywide. This is a proposal- This is a proposal from the Central Valdosta Development Authority to add malt beverage only or wine and malt beverage only as a possibility within the downtown Valdosta Entertainment District only, not citywide. That is the proposed change. This is first reading of the ordinance to amend this part of Chapter 6, and the second reading will be scheduled in two weeks from tonight. We went over this in pretty good detail, I think, at the work session. Be glad to try and answer any questions that you might have.
Counsel, any questions for Matt?
I just want to ask one.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I just want to ask one. Matt, I know because we've had this before, have they done any kind of like studies or surveys to see by having this, like they say, wine in the beer, kind of how that affects the areas, like if it's making it bring it more of a crowd or what type of...
This is something I know the Central Valdosta Development Authority has talked about for several months. In their view, it is something to broaden the possibility of some mixed-use type businesses in downtown, something that's been a trend nowadays that perhaps was not so much a trend 20 years ago. We had mentioned the axe-throwing business, you know, that would have liked, I think, to serve beer. We have another business that's about to open that will include some entertainment, includes a bowling alley as well as some snacks. They are also interested in serving beer. Those types of businesses where it's not just either food and beverage only or something else, but a mixture. Their belief is they've seen this in other cities. They think it might be a good thing for Valdosta. The recommendation here is rather than open it up citywide, maybe as a test case, focus on the downtown area and the entertainment district, which is a few extra blocks, and see how that works, and then make a judgment call on it after it has run its course for a time.
Okay, I was just wondering if we're looking at like an age group, if we're trying to liven it up with younger folks or something, but that's what I was just wondering, how they study if anything was showing that, but that's fine.
I have been to the axe-throwing place more as a spectator than a participant. I am not very good at that. I'm particularly bad at darts, and I know with an axe that it can only be worse, but my family enjoys it. And our ages range from 25 to 60, so it's not just young people, although seems to be popular with young people.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Howard?
Mayor, so this malt-only, so you're just talking about beer-only establishments, right?
Right, it would be wine-only or malt-only or wine and malt-only. In other words, completely exclude distilled spirits, commonly known as alcohol.
Okay, so that's what I'm saying, so it would be either or?
Either or or both, wine and beer, to use the vernacular terms, but exclude liquor.
Okay.
In other words, a malt-only lumps into the same basket as a wine-only, but only for the downtown.
And liquor would still require the restaurant requirements?
Correct. No changes to that part of the code.
Any other questions for Matt?
I just do remember saying we talked about Tuesday, you said you understood 20 years ago, you go back and discuss these things, and we should have hoped that we closed them down for seven years, which I am thoroughly offended if you're talking about doing this now, that he had his businesses down here, and the previous council shut it down for 48 hours, but honestly, I'm...
Counsel, any other questions for Matt? Again, this is only a first reading, no action taken tonight. Matt, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Move on to item five, bids, contracts, agreements, and expenditures. Item A, consideration of a utility easement agreement for the placement of underground utilities at the Valdosta Lounes County Parks and Rec Freedom Park located out on Guest Road. Jason Barnes, our superintendent at the water treatment plant, will present.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just to give you a little bit of history, Freedom Park Sports Complex on Guest Road was built about 15 years ago. The park is operated by Valdosta Lounes Park and Recreation Authority. The construction featured five softball fields, a concession stand, and restrooms. The concession stand and the restrooms discharged their wastewater onto an on-site behind one of their fields on a septic tank. The septic tank has required inconvenient regular maintenance and the costs associated. I know usually on the weekends, they have a bunch of ball tournaments, and they got several teams there, and they just can't keep up, so that's one reason why we're asking for this approval. The owner of the park property is the East and West Investments Incorporated, and has changed for a construction of a small lift station and sewer force main, proposes to grant the city of Valdosta access to the facilities. These facilities collect the wastewater and pump the discharge away and off the site into the city's wastewater system. Per code, the facilities will be within a 20-foot-wide utility easement. This easement remains the property of the owner, but is accessible to the city in perpetuity. This is going to come from SPOS 8 land acquisition. The staff has just recommended to approve and execute the agreement written by East and West Investments Incorporated.
Counsel, any questions for Jason? Jason, thank you. Counsel, I'll turn this over to you for action.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the proposal as stated.
Second. Have a motion and a second, any further comments? All in favor, show of hands. Unanimous. Jason, thank you. Item six, local funding and requests. Consideration of a request to approve the purchase of GIS survey equipment, software, and training for the utilities design GIS division from Tremble Navigation, the sole source provider. Jason Barnes again to present.
Thank you, Mayor. The Utilities Department GIS Division is currently operating in survey equipment and software purchased over 10 years ago. The new survey equipment and software will allow field personnel to collect GIS and survey data at significantly increased satellite network connection times 400 to 500% improvement, allowing connection to previously unavailable constellation of Galileo satellites and improve efficiency. The new tremble antenna and handheld receiver is designed specifically for more challenging environments such as heavy tree cover, tall buildings, and other conditions which limit direct overhead satellite reception. The Utilities GIS Department has a significant number of water and sewer assets for survey, updates, tracking of repairs, and maintenance locations, and the new equipment will increase the accuracy and efficiency of the surveying workflow. The current GIS survey equipment is now unsupported for repair and replacement parts. Our newest GIS data collector is non-operational, and we are using our oldest backup data collector that is also outmoded. These are going to come from user funds of $37,000, and the staff recommends to approve the purchase of the below-sold source equipment from the tremble dealer supplier in the amount of $36,696.65.
Counsel, any questions for, any questions for Jason? No questions, Jason, thank you. Counsel, it's yours for action.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the request as presented.
Second. A motion and a second, any further comments? None, all in favor, show of hands. Unanimous, thank you, Counsel. Item B, unfunded request, consideration of request to approve the purchase of utility detection radar equipment, software, and the training for the Utilities Department. Jason again to present.
Thank you, Mayor. The Utilities Department Engineering GIS locates an inspection division that is currently in the need of acquiring a utility detection GPR ground penetrating radar to assist in difficult to find underground water and sewer system assets. The new GPR utility detection equipment and software will help locator field personnel to identify water and sewer pipes that do not have tracer wire attached to them or are difficult to find using other magnetic or radio frequency located equipment. The Utilities GIS Department has a significant number of 811 locate tickets that are processed each month to locate our water and sewer assets to protect them from the damage from developers, builders, underground utilities, contractors, and other utility owners within the city right away or easements. The Utilities Department does not currently own any GPR utility equipment, and this is going to come from SPOS 8 for $26,000, and the staff recommends to approve the purchase of the below-sold source equipment from Letica Geo System Supplier in the amount of $17,995.
Any questions for Jason? None, Jason, thank you. Counsel, it's yours for action.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the presentation as presented.
Second. A motion and a second, any further comments? All in favor, show of hands. Unanimous again. Jason, thank you.
Thank you.
Move on to item C, consideration of request to purchase two new fire engines for the Valdosta Fire Department. Chief Ryan Boutwell will present.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As we spoke on Tuesday night about the purchase of the engines, these are replacement engines, we were fortunate enough earlier this year to be able to buy a demo at a much lower cost and much faster build time. Under the current economic environment, we're looking at 22, 24 months build time and an increase in price quarterly instead of annually. In the fiscal year '23 budget, we approved $734,454 per engine. With the increase, the engines are $813,148. If we have approval to proceed with this purchase, and we have a purchase order issued by September 14th, we'd be able to purchase them at $813,148. After September 14th, each engine goes up to $838,148, and these are replacement engines for one and five. They are a sole source purchase, we're just asking permission to pursue that purchase. Questions?
Age again of the two that are being replaced?
98.
Counsel, any further questions?
I did ask this on Tuesday, but what do you think we would get back when we sell the older engines? What do you think that we would get for them? Just curious.
Based on the past, these are 98s that we've already sold, several of them to smaller communities. We're talking into hundreds of dollars instead of thousands and thousands of dollars, and that depends on the repairs at the time and the condition of the engine.
I was just wondering.
At the time of sale.
Mayor, if I could also add, if someone's going to make the motion, if you would include in that motion to allow the finance director to seek viable financing options for these two engines as well.
Wait a minute, I have a question. You say you want to find financing options for that?
Yes, ma'am.
I thought they said that he had it and it was approved from...
So, right, in fiscal year '23, we were approved at $734, so we're just asking to continue with the purchase of $813,148, and that we allow the finance director to explore any other viable financing options.
So you're looking for somewhere else other than the, where you said we already got it from our financial department?
Right.
But we're not necessarily going to take it?
Depending on delivery times and things like that, and the economic environment, you know, in case when you look for a financing option because of low cash flow, then you guys have already approved that, and I will not have to come back and ask for a viable financing option to actually pay for the truck when that two-year time, probably going to be a 24-month timeframe comes around.
Right.
Okay, one of the reasons I'm confused is asking for it now, because you said at a certain time, if we don't get it now, purchase them now. Didn't I, didn't you say something?
If we don't get the bid in by September, a certain date, the price is going to go up.
So if we bid, so we're going to bid because we got the money to pay for it, right?
If we approve it now, then he can go ahead and submit it, so that if we come back later on, the price won't be higher. And so he's asking for the option to finance instead of just purchasing it right outright.
And we don't know where we're going to get the money from. Is that what you're saying? We don't have, we don't know. I thought it was coming out of the budget where we said we already had, but you're saying we don't really know? I mean, I'm a little bit lost.
Yes, it was coming out of SPOS.
Do we pay upon it being...
Delivery.
Delivery.
Right.
So we pay upon delivery, which is in two years, is what he's saying? If that...
I kind of hear that in a way, okay, so...
I see what you're saying, that initially it was approved in the budget, but now that we're, how much are we over, 100 and...
So if we go ahead and move forward now before September 14th, we're looking at about $90,000 over.
$90,000 over budget? Okay.
Right.
So we may be able to, between now and 24 months from now, be able to offset that...
That's right. All we're asking for is for you to allow the finance director to look at that if we need to in 24-month timeframe.
I got you.
And the debt back could be paid from SPOS state, because as you stated, that's where it is budgeted at anyway, so the payment would come out of SPOS state as well, so no change there.
You're right, Ms. Tully, it sounds like they're asking for a safety net.
Yeah, like we're going to get a loan we may or may not need, like, I mean, I see what he's saying, other ways like that. It's okay, just putting in debt, I don't think we need the debt.
Proportional to getting creative.
Okay, okay, okay.
And we normally do this with any of our fire engines that we get because they're so expensive, and you pay at the time of delivery, we usually ask for counsel to allow financing options if we had to go that route, so it's not unusual to ask that.
I'm not saying that, okay, okay, but I just look, I mean, I'm just like we're saying, we're looking for, we got the funds or something like that to use it. That's why you said we need to go ahead now and make this, rather than later on, put it up for bid. You're saying we need to get it by a certain date.
So they're, we're locked in at 813. If we, if, so tomorrow, I'll requisition and try to get a purchase order issued on Monday to lock us in at 813. That's going to save us in excess of $50,000.
Okay.
All right, so we'll be responsible for that payment at the 22 to 24-month build time, and so what we're asking is that not only do we allow, we're asking permission to pursue this purchase, and also not really knowing the economic environment 22, 24 months ago, that we go ahead and attach that we allow the finance director to explore viable financial options in the case that's needed at this time, two years from now. Well, the price will be locked in. That's what we're, that's what we're voting on tonight, yes, ma'am, but...
Just don't know the outcome.
Two years down the road, you know, we're looking at 813, these trucks will be, I mean, easily a million, not ours, because we're voting tonight to approve at 813, right? So, two years down the road, the economy has taken a downward turn, so that cash flow that city management was referring to was a little bit different than we expected in two years. We're just going ahead tonight and allowing, giving the finance director permission to explore viable financial options in case that's needed at the time, the safety net for, for the purchase.
I think we should probably wait until, see if we need it, because if we get that and we get some money, we getting into debt that we may not necessarily need. I understand what you said about having that buffer to have it just in case it over, but we have been getting funding for different things and so forth like that. I'm just looking like we're trying to make a debt we don't really need, it's a just-in-case. We do not know what inflation is going to be, so I just wish I would have had a little time to think about it before it was just printed. That's what I'm just saying. Look like the...
Counselwoman Tully, Counselwoman Tully, what he's saying is, if we go ahead and submit the bid now, we'll get it at the 813.
13,000.
If we wait to 2024...
Then let's do that. I'm saying why we got to add the extra...
You have to have the trucks, you have to go ahead and place the order, because if we wait to 2024, then we won't get the trucks to 2026.
Well, let's bid on that.
We need the trucks now.
Well, I'm just saying let's bid on it. I'm not saying not bid on them. I'm saying what is this extra about? We're going to allow our finance office to...
That's basically saying, instead of us taking the money out of our SPOS money right now, you're going to give our finance team an option to finance versus spending the $780,000 or $813,000 in two years. What if we need that $813,000 or something else?
Okay, I understand what you're saying.
That's all we're asking for is the option. We're not saying that we're going to do it, we're just saying we're giving them the option to do so, so we can get the truck and the two trucks in two years because we need them. That's all he's asking for.
Okay, I understand that, but I, I'm just saying, I hear that, and I understand that, and it's fine, but I just heard him originally when I was looking at it, he said we have budgeted for it, so if we budgeted for it, we should have it. That's what I'm just looking at. If we got the money, we budgeted for it, let's use that. But now I'm hearing you saying, we're going to look for another fund, and we're going to go and get a loan, just have it just in case, and that's the only thing I was just looking at, and when you're getting that extra loan, you got, what, interest, there's other ways, you're just putting a little more debt on the city. That's, that's all I was looking at.
But we're covering it 90,000, right?
Well, it depends, again, all...
If we had to.
We, the last thing, let me just say this, the last thing we want to do, and I can assure you the finance director feels the same way I do, is you see, we present a conservative budget every year to you guys. If we don't have to go into debt, we're not going into debt. This is just simply saying, hey, if the cash flow isn't there in two years, because the uncertain economic times we're in, we just won't shut the baby to explore. If it doesn't have to explore, we're not even going to look at it at that time to get a loan, and what we would look at would be the GMA equipment vehicle lease purchase they do, which is very low interest, but again, do I foresee us having to do that?
Yes, because we're presenting it. We see the potential for it, right? You see the potential need for it, that's why we are asking.
But we also see the potential need to try and beat inflation instead of purchasing them for a million dollars each in two years.
Okay.
Any further questions? Any further questions for the chief? Anybody want to take on this motion?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve this purchase as presented with the addition that allows our finance director to seek a viable finance option if needed.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further comments? All in favor, show of hands. All in opposition, same sign, oh, unanimous.
I just waited on record because it's going to come back.
Thank you, Council. Thank you, Chief.
Oh, there's debt, we getting.
All right, Item D, consideration of our request to abandon a utility easement located at 2585 Marathon Drive. Ben O'Dowd, our city engineer, to present.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm going to highlight a brief history of the request. The request was brought to our attention by Innovate Engineering and Surveying on behalf of S&amp;S Services of Lowns County LLC to abandon an existing utility easement on their property located at 2585 Marathon Drive. The property is described as map 0151A parcel 047 and is depicted as lot 8, and I've got an attached subdivision drawing in your packet that you can view for reference there. There it is, and it should be highlighted in yellow, yep. That's the portion of the utility easement that is being requested for abandonment. We forwarded this request to all of the city departments and all of the relevant utility companies. The only comment was from the Utilities Department that there was at one time a sanitary sewer service in that easement, that sanitary sewer service has since been abandoned and rerouted by the contractor, and so as a result of that, our staff recommend that we approve the easement abandonment. Any questions?
Council, any questions? Thank you. Council, it's yours for action.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion we approve this easement abandoned as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second, our district, all in favor, show of hands. Unanimous, thank you, Council. That closes out that portion of the night. We'll move on to citizens to be heard. A portion of the meeting that we ask you to come forward, state your name and address so we have it for the record. Our policy requires you stay under three minutes so that others have time to be heard. Please direct all comments to Council as a whole and do not attempt to engage individual members of Council in debate. It's our policy to follow through with you on your concern. Additionally, we ask that any groups who want to address the Council designate a spokesperson. Again, this will ensure all have time to be heard. That being said, is there anybody, any citizens wishing to be heard tonight? Please state your name. And move the microphone.
Mayor, Council, and manager, Samantha Matthews, Executive Director of the Turner Center for the Arts, I reside at 4069 Conway Circle, and I just, I'm happy to tell you that the Turner Center for the Arts is in the running. We're one of 36 organizations across the nation that are in the running for up to $180,000 in grant and matching funds to, for the next three years to produce outdoor, free outdoor concerts for our community. We need your help though, because it's like ESPN Title Town USA where you have to vote, so I have these little sheets, and all you have to do between September 12th and the 21st is you vote Valdosta, and doing so, you're bringing this money. Listen, it's got, 36 communities are in the running for this, so it can go to, there's two in Hawaii, although I would love that, but you know, there's like four in Virginia, there's some in Texas, and you know, it's all across the nation, why not bring it here to Valdosta? Just get it on your phone, get on your computers, vote Valdosta between 12th, September 12th and the 21st, and if we're in, we just have to drop from, out of 36 communities, we need to drop to the 20, the top 20, and then we're in the running for 10 that receive this grant. It's $90,000 in grants, it's $30,000 a year with a $30,000 match, so it's a total of $180,000. As you know, that we started the Music and the Art Park series three years ago during, right before COVID hit, and we've been getting businesses to provide the funding to pay those bands, so it doesn't cost us anything, it's still a free outdoor concert, but this is many concerts, can you imagine how many concerts, how many outdoor community events that we can provide for our community in our region, people that will bring, you know, their families here, and also the musicians here that would get paid. They're all, you know, fighting for the same, you know, clubs to perform in, and there's a lot of outdoor space, as you know, that we can provide these great gathering places for our community. This is a place where people can come as they are, they don't have to dress up, they bring their kids, they bring their dog, they bring their lunch bag, we don't care, just come and enjoy the music and enjoy life with us in the City of Valdosta. So, any questions for me?
Samantha, I'd like to say that I took it upon myself to go ahead and do this when you gave it to me, and apparently I didn't read the rest of it, but it did confirm my vote, though.
Oh, it did? Well, it shouldn't.
It said, "Your vote for Valdosta is confirmed."
Wow, okay, thank you.
Just letting you know.
I will definitely look at that, but this is only supposed to be voting for the 12th, the 21st, but go ahead, you know, vote again, you know, let's see if, maybe if that works, maybe you can vote five times on your phone, we'll do whatever we need to do, but help us get this money. You already showed that you support the Turner Center and what we're doing, please help us. You've got constituents, you've got people that you have, you have churches and whatever your businesses, tell them to vote Valdosta. I've got extra of these handouts from the outside, but I can bring you posters, I can bring you whatever, we need to win this for Valdosta, $180,000. Can you imagine how many concerts we can, you know, give to the community over a three-year period? Thank you so much for your support, appreciate it.
Thank you, Samantha. Yep, share, share, share. We all voted multiple times during Title Town.
Voted early and often.
Any other citizens to be heard at this time? Seeing none, I'll turn it over to Mark Barber, our city manager, for the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. I did want to report today that myself and the county manager, Matt, right before we came up here to the meeting, and we decided that we need to move tomorrow's 9/11 remembrance ceremony to, it's going to be because of the inclement weather, so we're going to move it to the lobby of the judicial complex and go from there. We just would rather be safe than sorry with that latest weather event that Ashley Tyson sent us earlier this afternoon, so again, same time, 10 a.m., but it will be over here at the judicial complex in the lobby, so if you'll just mark that on your calendars of that change. Saturday, we're still having the 5K run at, firefighters are doing, and they do such a great job with that. I think it starts at 7:59 at Benny's Alley, and then there's a ceremony afterwards, but it was very successful, popular last year, so, but that's still on as far as I know, Chief, is that correct? All right, so, because it'd be cool to run in the rain anyway, so, but anyway, that's my report.
Close that out, move on to Council comments. I just scratched out two things on mine, so I'll just, I'll just finish up with the, on 9/11, on Sunday, down at the 4H Club in Twin Lakes, will be the James Eunice Swim, it's a 5K and a one-mile. It officially starts at 7:30. I'm coming out to support that great cause that's given back so much to so many as well. Again, I'll be, I'll be a kayak guide, I don't swim, I paddle. No, no. Council, any further comments? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Please stand adjourned.